Coming up on UGTV. A special session of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas.
I'm going to call the meeting to order. Again, thank everyone for being here tonight. I'd ask the clerk to announce the meeting and call the roll, please.
A special session is being held on Thursday, September 12, 2019, at 5:00 PM in the 5th floor conference room for priority-based budgeting follow-up. Immediately following, the commission will reconvene to the 9th floor conference room for an executive session regarding litigation. Roll call. Bynum?
Here.
Burrows?
Here.
Townsend?
Here.
Kiernan?
Here.
Muggia?
Johnson?
Here.
Kane?
Here.
Markley?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Philbrook?
Here.
Albee? Here. All right, so we've scheduled a follow-up for our priority-based budgeting. I'll turn it over to Administrator Bach.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission. So what we've done and what you have in front of you, and we tried to issue it out on Monday so you would see, was the objective was to put together the cumulative goals that had been agreed to by these groups, and we went and broke them out, and then we came back through final decision-making. And then we tried to build the infrastructure category, which you have not seen. So I will say there's the, we left this with the exception of the economic prosperity one being one that we felt like we needed to come back and go through, and we had some questions probably from there, and then if we saw other questions, we left those in place. I also had staff go through and look at the infrastructure goals because as we had not had that goal before, I wanted to make sure we had direct input from Public Works and planning as to some key things they might need on. Now, that's not on this sheet. This sheet is what we, what we believe you all said, or at least where we were when we left here, and then when we go into that, we can pull infrastructure up by itself. So this is really open to however you guys think you want to do it, but I would probably say going to the category of increased economic prosperity of the community and opportunity for others, which in itself, the title, it's kind of hard trying to get down to exactly what we thought you said out of that, so took this and put it in place. And if that changes that, but then to go through each one of these descriptions and see if that's what we want, and then all the way down to the end. So I know Commissioner Markley, you were kind of leading us through this when we left, last left, and if that's what you'd like to do back on that goal, your group was working it, and you were the spokesperson, if you want to take off back into that, or whatever your pleasure is. Or if you have any other questions before we start that. Okay.
Well, it looks like let's start with the title. So if you recall, when we were here last time, we were saying our group was struggling with the previous wording, which said we were going to increase economic prosperity for our residents, but most of the goals applied to prosperity for the community as a whole, and so we were trying to craft language that addressed that. So it looks like we have sort of some options as to how we want to word that. We talked about using the word "community" in particular because it was broader and, rather than prosperity of the government, because that sounded too much like we were just trying to pat our pockets up a little bit. What do you guys think of the language that's on our sheet? Or in front of you?
Yeah, and I'll say this, the language that's on this sheet is not the same language that's on the sheet that's on the board, so.
I got a thumbs up from Brian. I didn't get anything from anybody else.
I like the comment in there about the opportunity for our residents.
Yeah, I know, and that's not the same.
I think that was a good save.
And it does, I think it's addressed in one of the goals more specifically as well, if I remember correctly. Is there anything anybody would want to change about the language as it is? The new language in the gray box. All right, title, good, check. All right, so then we, these goals were, I think there were, some of them were in this category, and some might have gotten moved from other categories, I think, in the course of discussions last time. Now that we are, now that we know we can address community prosperity as well as individual capacity, are there specific goals that you want to look at more closely? Did anybody have concerns about specific statements under this title? Or were there things that people thought were duplicative? I know the transportation item is addressed also in infrastructure, but we did talk about some duplicity is to make sure that we're getting points, right, in our numbering system.
The only thing, and we had this on one of our goals, is offers efficient, affordable, and responsive public services to support the business community. Strike-out business, yeah. I'm not sure that we want to, I understand what we were trying to do probably when we adopted that language, but certainly not limiting it just to the business community.
So it's the third one down. And you're, just strike business, is that what you're saying?
May I think you could say "support our residents and businesses."
So in the improved customer service category, we have that same language. We just have it shorter, "offers efficient, affordable, and responsive public services." But do we want to keep it?
I think that's really what we're, we could, we could just drop off the, that infinitive phrase there, "to support the community."
Because the idea is if, if we're providing those services, then that is increasing prosperity by helping our residents have more money, helping our businesses have more money, and helping them function better, right?
Right, it gets to, it gets to the point where efficient, affordable, responsive public service, that should provide better quality of life and also opportunities for reduce the tax burden, and...
So one question on this statement, though, is, does everything that we do end up getting tied to this line item? You know what I mean? Like, how do we decide what doesn't count toward us? That's kind of what we do as a government as a whole, right, is provide the efficient, affordable, and responsive public service. So if we're not, if we're going to tie everything to it, if it's going to make it so broad that everything is going to get tied to it, then it's not really valuable. Or are there specific services that we want to tie to it? I'm just thinking, first of all, that's maybe covered in one of the other sort of categories that are the more administrative categories of this budget function. I don't know about that. But then I also just wonder, is there anything that's not going to end up being able to be tied to this in one way or another?
Yeah, again, I think it comes back to the point you were making before. We're trying to marry what the commission goals are to how this works within the budget process, and this is certainly a goal. This is the goal, right? I don't know, how would you, from budget, how would you state that?
And maybe too with that, do you, can you think of any service we provide that you probably wouldn't say hits that?
Well, and I think...
It is a key point.
Yeah. I think I can see it more...
It's kind of an overarching direction versus...
Under the customer service, I think I was focusing more on the responsiveness aspect, and I was thinking like 3-1-1 ties to that, right? Because we're trying to be more responsive. But then when I see it over in this column, I think, well, if it's not about responsiveness, I mean, police are going to say, "We're providing efficient, affordable, responsive." Fire's going to say, "We're providing efficient, affordable, responsive." Transportation's going to say, "Well, that's what we do too." So I just wonder if we're creating, I mean, if everybody puts their point in that row, then it's not relevant as a goal because we're not going to be able to use it to keep...
I would add, when I look at it in the increased economic prosperity column, I might be thinking about things like planning processes and permitting and licenses and things like that, that we certainly want to be efficient, affordable, and responsive.
And that's where I'm wondering if we should just, if we can be more specific to the services we provide that contribute most directly to the economic prosperity aspect.
And I think one of the things when we created that particular definition, we were thinking about the public services that we also provide, but we were also thinking about the businesses that we attract, that they provide affordable services to our citizens also.
Do you have a mission statement or a vision statement associated with this document?
Yes.
Can we incorporate that comment into the vision statement or the mission statement? I mean, I think it pretty much covers everything. I mean, if you feel adamant about that language and worried about where it goes, I mean, if it's part of the vision, if it's part of the vision statement or part of the mission statement, it covers it all. And you don't have to worry specifically if it's for business or for citizens or the community, it just collectively covers it all as an umbrella.
So Doug, would you explain again why we, this was specifically stated, the business community?
So I think the, the initial intent of this description tied back to, you know, you're looking at economic prosperity, so we were trying to, kind of goes on what Commissioner Bynum was saying, that we're trying to find efficient, provide efficient services to the business community, so they can, their efforts to go through our process and be effective in what they're doing. I think that's where this description probably came from with that business. Michael, Reggie, is that what you guys recall as we, as you developed this? And I think that's, now I remember, that's kind of more the discussion when we went back through what you guys developed.
I think it, we wanted to make sure that we could attract businesses to our jurisdiction to do business, so we wanted to provide, like, affordable, make sure everything was accessible to businesses to enter the Unified Government's territory.
So our missions.
You're so smart.
We did it again. Mission of the Unified Government is to deliver high-quality, efficient services and be a resource to our residents. We are innovative, inspired, public servants focused on our communities' wants and needs. So it's kind of in there.
So I think the intent of this one was really probably for more of economic development, planning, you know, maybe some DRC, where they would, where those agencies could, if they, what they're doing there could score, would score points in regard to that versus, as you're saying, everything.
I think it's important there for that purpose.
So are we putting the word "business" back in?
I was going to say "economic development," just be blatant about it.
To support economic development instead of business community? Is that what you're saying?
I think that helps refine it because you still would see, if it just said that, then if somebody like police could look at that and go, "Oh, we're providing affordable service to the..."
Businesses, yeah.
"...to a business." But that's not what, you know, you want them to provide that, but not from this goal. That's not what this is after. This is really after those specific services that we are pinpointing to help businesses be more successful in our community.
So, yeah, Doug, I mean, that, that was the reason that we hit that point, was because so many of us that have to deal with businesses and them constantly chewing on us about having a slow response from City Hall if they have things to take care of, that's where that came about, okay, from some of us.
So again, as a budget group, does, which language works for you to be able to align your efforts with what the community goal is, commission goal?
Adding economic development would better help us when we were going through our scoring, to be able to identify with it.
Okay, are we comfortable with that revised language? And then, do we want to do anything differently with the sort of matching language under customer service? Do we think that...
I think that's different.
Yeah, I think, like I said, I thought more about the responsiveness and like 3-1-1 being tied to that, and, you know, public relations type things being tied to that, but should we...
Code enforcement, those kinds of things.
Yeah. Do you think we should try to be more specific in that one? Instead of public service, should that one say "service to residents"? Instead of public service, should it say "service to residents" under that customer service column, or just services?
You could just say "services," because if you... Because we have to provide services to businesses too.
Or community services.
Yeah, I think that was one of, when we talked about this under customer service, so what, that we weren't just, we were serving, it was to serve everyone, residents, businesses, people who worked here maybe that didn't live here. It was for everyone, not specific to just residents or the business community.
Right.
Okay, back to the economic prosperity. Are there other goals under that that we are uncomfortable with or that we would like to reword? And then it looks like staff has left us a note here that we talked about a fiscal sustainability aspect in our group last time, and do we want to address that with some language?
I've got one question, two, three, the fifth one. Attracts employers to the area that will provide residents a living wage and good benefits. And I think also we have employers now that do that, and we certainly want to support them.
Do you want to say "support" or "retain"?
retains, maybe.
Attracts and retains, yeah.
Because really, that's right back down to what Wydeck is doing, right?
Yeah. All right, do we want to address this fiscal stability aspect? I think the discussion was, should we have a line item where we can tie things that we are doing to try to make sure that our government is on firm financial footing for the long term?
Say that again?
Should we have an item where departments can tie their efforts to make sure that we are on a firm financial footing going forward as a government, like, so we don't go bankrupt kind of deal?
I might ask staff, if you guys could explain how you interpret governance goals in relationship to this goal, and that, so, see whether we think that covers it in that area outside of these other steps.
So the departments that we would see as monitoring stability and sustainability and our fiscal health would be more governance departments, like finance or the knowledge department, HR, and so those are actually wordings that we have in governance goals that already exist, that we're scoring our governance programs against.
So can you, can you imagine a scenario where somebody would not fall under those goals, but we would want to tie their efforts? I guess I'm trying to find from you guys, do you think we need a separate goal because somebody's not going to get caught up under that governance portion, and we'll want them to get caught up here? If not, then I think we're good, but, go ahead.
So I have a question. So fiscal stability, I thought that was our goal for everything, for our government overall. I mean, so that's why I'm kind of wondering why it's down in this category. I mean, are you just feeling like we need to have it somewhere?
No, we put it here because you mentioned it last week.
Oh, no, I'm just asking.
Like, it's not your fault.
I think from a staff perspective, unless you guys come up with something else, we think it's covered under governance.
Governance.
And those, those areas that do it.
I'm comfortable with that, too. Thank you.
All right, anything else under this economic prosperity section? If not, I think the other big section for consideration was the infrastructure. I don't know who's in charge of that, if you want me to keep talking.
And I may have Melissa help with this. You guys went through and made some notes to what was done here, so I know you met with staff, and you guys came back with some notes to build into this, to, to work through this, so Commissioner, however you'd like to proceed on this.
Okay, we'll jump in, Commissioner Markley, whenever you feel the need to try to save me. So I did sit down with Jeff Fisher and Rob Richardson and try to vet these out, so that we made sure that they were trying to capture as much as we could. There was a few down here in the yellow, we'll get to in a little bit, that I don't think we solved for, but we wanted to bring to your attention. The notes over on the far right are our suggested revisions for what was here. So the original one was providing for design, well-designed neighborhoods, and kind of was a little bit of a hodgepodge talking about parks. When we rewrote it, what we were suggesting that you might consider is design future neighborhoods and enhance existing neighborhoods that will serve residents' day-to-day needs and provide high-quality life. So this is kind of your planning, infrastructure phrase that you would go back to. The next, the next one was about the transportation and utility networks, which was an interesting thing to throw together. So what we were suggesting, that you would merge 3 and 4, which is, is 3, that 4, to develop and maintain safe and sustainable systems of complete streets and bridges. Complete streets include sidewalks, bike lanes. That was where they were headed. Yeah. And it just talks about, 3 or 4 talks about a safe and sustainable roadways, and then calls out different features of roadway. We just said "complete streets," which is the concept that's on the ordinance.
So you're talking about merging 2 and 3, right?
Well, yeah, it would be the line 3, line 4. Sorry, that's where the numbers were.
We're looking at...
Oh, yes, sorry, yes, we were looking at it on an Excel document, so our notes are pertinent to the rows on the Excel document, I apologize. So that's a suggestion, again, we have very much interest in what you think as well. So line 4 would be merged, the one above, line 5, we are suggesting that that be replaced with something related to environmental stewardship, which is what, you know, most of our EPA stuff is related to, so I don't know that we, we didn't finish the wording, we just suggest that that was where, if you wanted to use those terms, that would probably be a good way to look at it. The next one, line 6, we were, we were fine with. Line 7, there, we were suggesting that perhaps reword it to say "provides the community with parks, recreation opportunities, and amenities that are accessible to all, well-maintained, and promotes," oops, I missed in an Esther Lisa, "an active and healthy lifestyle." These were not fun to deal with, just so you know.
So 1 and line 2, I guess that's what you're calling it.
Yes.
And line 7 are pretty related there.
This is, line 7 is particular, just to parks, where line 2 is actually about neighborhood development, and we actually got into the question about how they interplay with each other and the connectivity of getting from one type of space to the other, and there's opportunity there to make things better, I guess. And then down here on line 8, we just said that we should consider adding wording regarding maintenance of existing infrastructure, not as limited as the definition in the blight one was. We thought this might be a top goal for the commission, just based on what we've been talking about. And then our recommendation was "provides for proper construction," or, that was the old language that was on the other one, that we would like to add, "provides for proper construction of new infrastructure and public projects and private development." The reason for that, these two, is one gets at existing infrastructure and one gets at getting new infrastructure in the way that's best for us to maintain. When you talk about fiscal stewardship and sustainability, that would be really nice, so. And then line 9, another suggestion that we had was talking about asset management, which we've also been working quite a bit on, you can tell Jeff Fisher was in the room, "provides for integrated planning and management of capital improvements systematic approach." And he was recommending that might be the second goal listed. And then over to the right of that, improves life cycle, manages costs or reduces cost with the portfolio of buildings, because we didn't have anything in there mentioning our buildings. And then we had two others, one which Alan will be really happy with, was a mention of technology infrastructure, and then the other one was caught up above, so that's the mess I left you with. I apologize, I didn't get any further.
So the, after the, to the right of the yellow ones, that language is the suggested language for that yellow, or it's unrelated? Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out.
Yeah, I don't like to do those things, too, so...
This is all new, I mean, nobody went over this as a group, because this was a new area, so.
Well, I will say, the yellow piece, consider adding wording regarding maintenance of existing infrastructure, again, operationally within the budget. If we're asking departments to evaluate, are they maintaining existing infrastructure? You know, that's, if it's a priority, and, which it has to be, because it gets lost sometimes, so I think that's a good move, because that's a question each department could ask themselves, oh, you know, what, first of all, it presumes we know all of our infrastructure, all those assets, and then really, what are we doing to maintain those and sustain them? I think that's, that's a good, that would be a good addition somehow.
I have a question.
Yep.
So these are great, and I was here, and I mean, I wasn't here, but I was part of the discussion via phone on these goals, and in my small group, I mentioned some kind of bigger concerns about the way that this is done, but it was already done, so we just improved what, the format that was there. My question really is more, there's some of you around this table that are better at wordsmithing than I am, but at the end of the day, how are we going to measure these?
Commissioner McGee? So it's, I told Commissioner Markley I was going to be really good tonight, but those are some of the things that I've been asking, and I've already started drafting some thoughts around that. And I thought that for the purpose of what we're needing to get done tonight, there's really no need to go there yet, but if you'd like to join some of us who are going to deliberate on more definitions, more measurable goals, then I do think that that would be beneficial for all of us, to bring this back around to, what do we mean when we say this? How will we measure that? What will we consider success for this particular goal area? So I've started drawing up some notes, I decided not to bring those up tonight, but now that you have, we can meet later.
You can join my side on this.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, so this is great, I think people put a lot of effort in it, it's organized very well, and I think it's really great, but I just have always been part of organizations that had more specific objectives, and they were more like individual words, instead of trying to craft almost a mission statement for every single goal that you have. So I'm not trying to change this, but I just feel like I need to say it on the record. So I had envisioned when we talked about this, and when I took, I did take this home and look at it, Doug. And, you know, I, I didn't want to say anything then either, because your staff had put so much effort into it, but when I think of blight reduction... much effort into it, but when I think of blight reduction, which I think all the headings are good, I think of, that should be really, like, all of us saying, okay, what can reduce blight, like mowing lots, demolishing dilapidated property, getting tax delinquent property to the tax sale. I mean, those are very specific things that are really easy to come up with measurements on, like, are we going to demolish 5% more of the houses than what we demolished this year? And if we do that, what is not on our list that we're going to have to, okay. So maybe I just, maybe to view, maybe it is the same, so I'll let it go tonight also, I will, I'll let it go. But I wanted to say it out loud, because to me, and I know if it, I have a master's in business, so I think I'm sort of smart, but I would just think the average person that's out on the street that would want to say, what is the FBI government doing next year? If they were to read this, I would think they'd be kind of confused. I think what they'd understand, though, is we're going to mow this many lots, we're going to demolish this many houses, we're going to move this many properties through the land bank, we're going to build this many, we're going to make, we're going to set a goal of, I don't know, whatever Doug and economic development decide, we're going to build $100 million worth of economic development in this city, we're going to build $100 million worth of new housing stock in this community. I mean, I just am not familiar with doing goals like this, they seem very broad, and what it kind of opens us up for is that whatever pops up then, I mean, there's nothing anybody could say here tonight, or that's watching on television, that I couldn't fit under one of these things. So it kind of seems like a lot of fluff, but there's some good things to it.
So I guess the question I have is, you know, within the priority-based budgeting, how will this document function? What purpose, how does it work within the process of priority-based budgeting? Because from what I understand, what we were trying to get at was, as we craft this, it then becomes the guide for allocation of resources, reallocation perhaps, and at that level, I'm not sure we have to get down into those goals. In fact, those goals actually might be counterproductive. If they got, if they were SMART goals, specific, measurable, you know, all those things, if we, if we did those kinds of things, and at this level, the way it's supposed to, it may not function that way in the priority-based budgeting, which is not to say we don't do that exercise, but it has another purpose and functions in a different way in other places. So again, putting this back to the county administrator, the budget, this priority-based budgeting, this document that we're crafting, when we take this back to departments, how will it function for them?
So the departments are going to take this, and when you talk about, here's all the many different things we can do to accomplish the goals, what we have is 444 of those identified. So you really can't, or however many we came up, they're really the program operational areas.
Yes, so each department.
Which have many different things under each one of those. So they look at them and say, program one, does it accomplish any of this stuff on this sheet? And then we go into the quartile ranking. Program two, does it accomplish any of this stuff? So it's taking this to go back and say, this is what we're trying to accomplish in the end. You can call it fluff, but there's a lot to these, or, you know, when you try to do specific things, not every department's doing something that touches these, or they only do one or two. And that's really what we find when we go through it, is that there's some that do touch on a lot of all this stuff, and some that only touch on one or two. And then that's what you're going to get back to you, that comes back, that's your measurable piece, that says, here's your quartiles one, two, three, and four, which probably makes you then look at those in quartile four, which is the lower section, to say, okay, well, that's only touching one item. How much does that cost from a financial perspective? So is that something we really want to spend the time on? Or, or that much money on? You know, and so that's how, that's how this tool comes back, and you use it to go in and start taking. These are not goals, these are definitions. So this isn't what you wave out there in the community and say, this is what we're trying, you know, this is, these are, you got your goals on top, and then we define about ways to which we think they will be completed that way. And when your challenge, which it'll be challenged, the department does it, they challenge themselves, the peer group challenges, the management group challenges what we put on, and then you'll all challenge that, and see that, and you may see something that got to a low quartile and go, I disagree, I think that does everything. Or opposite, you may go into stuff that's in the highest quartile and go, I don't see that that's really doing everything for our community the way that works out. So that's kind of the overall, and I would.
Mayor?
Before I, I know you have questions, but I'm going to ask Budget, Melissa, if you guys, this is new for us, guys, so we're working through this, and we've looked at other cities, and this is how they've done it. Is that how you see this working?
Doug, you hit it right on. These are the definitions that we're looking at on what our operating work is, that we're budgeting for. When what Commissioner McGee was talking about is actually where we're trying to report to you, the statistics, the data of the outputs, the inputs, those types of things. One of the inputs is how much budget we put in. The question is, on the output side, sort of what are we achieving? We're going to be bringing that stuff back to you through our Invisio platform, which is actually taking your goals and showing how we're putting them to action if we're completing them or not. And then we're layering in data and metrics there. So we're going to get to that side of it while we're getting at this, but the two together become very valuable tools for Doug and you all to make a decision about where we allocate resources.
So I just, I just want to finish my thought here with this, and then I will stop. But I hear what you're saying, and I'll only speak for myself. For a commissioner whose job is to come up here once a week, and then once, another once a week for standing, or once a month for standing committee, this seems like a lot. And I'll just give you one example, where I just want to make sure that my lots get mowed, that, that we don't just see economic development in some districts, that we see economic development in each and every district, and that when something needs to be demolished, it gets demolished, and when there's a code violation, that it doesn't just get a ticket, but it actually makes some progress and gets addressed and resolved. And I want to see if we're getting faster at that, better at that, and how many more that we're doing. The things that I am less concerned with is how that happens, because really, when we hire a county administrator, how that happens is, in my opinion, is really up to the county administrators. So for example, under improved customer service and communication, it says fosters training and cooperation across departments, breaking down silos and working collaboratively with solving problems. I have yet to get a call from a constituent that says, I don't like the way that finance is working with economic development. They don't care about that. And we, as representatives of those people, what we care about is the issues that are most important, which were outlined in the community-wide survey, and then how we're going to address those. And then from finance, it just needs to come to us, if you want us to write more code violations and get them addressed faster, we need more officers, and that's where the decision comes to us. Or if you want us to mow more grass, it's going to cost more money for more mowers, and we need more employees to mow the grass. Or it may become a contract discussion that we make. But really, I feel like we're kind of in the weeds here, and I wouldn't be able to set a goal about silos, because I didn't know you all were working in silos. I don't, I don't work with you all eight hours a day, five days a week. So that, that's just a perspective, but I will trust the process, I just want to say that out loud, I'll trust the process that we'll get to eventually, where we're going to say, these are our priorities when it comes to blight reduction, these are our priorities when it comes to economic opportunities for prosperity for residents and business, and I'll just trust that eventually we'll get there, and it won't be so many pages or so much stuff, that it'll be like our budget is now, which it's really hard to find the line item that you care about within your district.
So if I, if I understand what this process does, because, you know, clearly those, that's, you're right, someone off the street is not going to come and look at this document and say, well, I disagree with this. That's, I want to know who's cutting the, who's fixing the curb. But what this is supposed to do, as I understand it, is to give our budgeting process the opportunity to say, well, the commission has identified its goals, they've articulated them this way, we are now evaluating to say, within our budget, whether the money we are expending, allocating to these functions is actually accomplishing what the commission says. That's why it's come to us, is for us to give our direction a very broad set of parameters about what we think is important, about how our, our departments ought to function. I do think, to help clarify this, it would be interesting to take, have a department take the document that we arrive at soon, and say, now, show us the product. If you were to go through this process using this tool, what would that, show us how that changes that particular department, so we can see the difference between what has happened before and what we're trying to get to with priority-based budgeting. I mean, at this point, we're just, it's hard for us to conjecture where this is going and how that's going to work. We almost need to see it applied, and for you to explain to us, we applied what you did to a particular department as they tried to do a budget process, and this is what the differences you will see, as an example, even a couple of departments or divisions. That's just a suggestion. Commissioner Bynum?
Thank you. I just, with regard to the first column, reducing blight, I do think we like measurements, but I believe our SOAR program has a very solid set of measurable goals within it. So I can only imagine that within this column, we've already got the measurements in place that we're, that we're hoping to utilize to reach these goal statements. Correct me if I'm wrong about that, but, you know, Commissioner McGee makes a good point, we want lots mowed, we want things torn down that need to come down, but we have all of those lined out within SOAR. When SOAR brings us an update, they tell us what the goal is and where they are against it. So especially with tax sales and delinquent properties and land bank properties and whatnot. So I feel like that's covered. I have a question under the improved community health column, because we have an adopted community health improvement plan, and it has four big chunks of goals within it with action items under each one. And so I'm wondering now, if that overlays, overlays well with the things that we have said, we believe improve community health. So I appreciate the work we've done. I need, I think, like all of you, to see how does it work in action, not only with regard to allocating a dollar to it, but how does it work with some of the other adopted planning documents that we've already put in place? Or does it? And I just wonder if we've, if we've taken that step yet.
Well, we've started applying it to department operations, of course, I think we're doing it for 18-type budgets, so we have to take these updated goals and apply it toward the nineteen, or the 20.
Okay.
And I think, yeah, you'll start to see it in a different light when we come back and start to show you how that scores out.
A year or so ago, I thought our fire department indicated that they were undertaking their first-ever strategic plan. And I don't know how that would play in, for example, with the safety column. You know, I just, just a thought.
Yeah.
I would just say, how I'm thinking about this, is if we have a blight goal, and the blight goal is we're going to reduce tax delinquent properties by 12%, whatever it is, the budget process for that, the people that are working on that are going to get all the points for doing that work, regardless of whether we get the 12%. See what I'm saying? Like, they're, they're, the tax delinquency department gets whatever it is, four points, is that the most points you can get?
Yes.
They get their four points, because they're working on tax delinquency. Whether we meet the 12% or not is unrelated to the budget framework. That's an operational goal. This is the budget framework, and all tax delinquency is going to say is, we are working on tax delinquency. What all the mowing people are going to say is, we're working on mowing, they're not going to tell how many lots they mowed.
Well, wait, though, that's my whole question.
Yeah.
Let's say some of us think, at least in some districts, maybe mowing isn't happening, since you brought up, in certain areas, and they would like to see more mowing done. How are you going to know if there's an effort being made to increase the amount of mowing in that area, if we're just going to base it on what we're already doing?
So it's two parts. So there's an operational goal that says, we're going to do this with mowing, we're going to increase the speed with, with which we mow lots, whatever it is, that's the operational goal. This, this, all this framework does is tell us, are we spending the amount of money on it that matches to how important we think it is? So if mowing is your number one, you think that's the most important thing we should be doing, but we're spending the lowest amount of money, you're going to say, wait a minute, that was a high priority, why is it not getting more money? This framework is only related to the budget. Our operational goals that they track in Invisio, is that right? Is that the name right? Their operational goals, those are the SMART goals, those are the measurable goals. So that's going to tell us, are we doing what we're supposed to be doing? This is just telling us, are we paying for what we're supposed to be paying for?
But why are we involved in that? Because we've already set, as a commission, we've already.
Staff would be happy if.
Because we already set the goals about, I mean, the community, we have the community survey, and we've all talked at length about the things that are important within our district. So we've set those goals, how they deliver that, really.
But what staff, I, I'm speaking for staff here, correct me if I'm wrong, I think staff didn't want us to come back and budget and say, well, this is showing something's a higher priority than the commission thinks it is, because you mucked up the definitions. So they want us to buy off on their definitions, so that we can't come back in the end and say, well, you skewed this a way that we didn't like, by making, by matching them up differently. Okay.
I can all, and you got it, you hit it right on, as to how it works. And that, the reason, you're kind of going away from where the, the point is about doing it, it is, and commission has asked this goal many times over the years, how do we know we're spending our money on all areas that we want to spend our money on?
You're trying to show.
And this will identify that. Now, the effectiveness that comes out in the measurement things, that's, that's a different area, but this is going to highlight for you, if we're spending money on areas that don't touch these goals, or touch very few of them. And then you'll see that, and you'll be able to weigh back in. And that's one that.
Right.
Has been called out a few times for us to come back and, and do this.
I mean, it simply is whether the, the budget, each department will assess whether the money that is being expended aligns with, consistently with what the goals the commission has identified. So we were brought into this so that we could sharpen perhaps these particular definitions, which are the results. Yes?
Something that Commissioner Bynum brought up around the improved community health thing, and the fact that we did do the CHIP work with Wyandotte Health Department, and that's in place, and they're putting that. Do we come into line with these goals with the CHIP? I think there's a couple of things we may have left out, and that's why I'm asking, you know, because this is part of our government, what, what we're paying for. I'm just going to ask that, ask that we take a look at that.
Maybe we should.
Well, we can. Well, there's one thing left off, but it's already over in another section, and that's, as long as it's addressed. It's in the, it's in the economic development part about jobs and that sort of thing.
If we weight the different columns differently, it will matter which column it's in, right?
Yep.
Yep.
So that's why I'm asking.
It is.
I will speak for myself only, it's been difficult for me to mesh all of that to budgeting. And I probably could have used perhaps even a one-on-one session before we came in last week, just for a better understanding of the process. It just takes me longer, I think, sometimes to absorb details.
Well, I think the other thing that's happening here is because budget works with this day in and day out, all year long, as does the county administrator. And so we're, we're one, at least arms-length removed from the process, and so. And so you work with the process and you understand how this exercise is going to get us to where we need to go. Since we don't do this day-to-day at that level, it's hard for us to, I think, grasp how these things work or don't work together, or what, what we're trying to get to. I think it's a leap.
I also think that once we get through the process, it might, it might be a little bit easier, but we're looking at each individual program. I know you've mentioned a couple of times, Mayor, the, looking at it from a department, but we're looking at it for each program, not getting away from that department look so that we can determine, you know, maybe there's a program in one department that really has a higher weight, and another department could have a program that has an equally high, right? And that's, the goal is to, to look at those programs, align them up with the commission goals, and then we can look at, as you said, how much we're, how much are we spending on the goals that have a high priority versus how much we're spending on the goals that have a lower priority?
I think the, the other, I guess, piece to add to, I think, and Mayor, you touched on this earlier, at the employee benefits is, or recognition, is this quandary that the commission continually faces, which is more cer, demand for more services and demand for reducing the tax burden. And so this is trying to sort of give additional illumination to the budget in ways that give the commission additional sort of options or choices around how to meet those competing demands. And I sort of think of the, the budget as a iceberg almost, right? And you can see, you see the top of it, but the other 90% is under the water, and it's very difficult to see. And so trying to understand, you know, how those, you know, is the spending, as you said before, aligning with these core goals, or are there changes that the commission wants to make that, that help to resolve some of that, that tension?
It seems to me that there are models out there that have worked, that we've looked at. And so I, while I agree with my colleagues here, I'm going to trust the process, Doug, and I want to kind of see where we're going with this. I'm going to trust the pro, I'm going to trust the process. I can't speak for my other colleagues here, but I kind of want to see where we're going. And I'm going to keep my opinions right, not mine, just suppressed, because I just want to kind of see where we're going and what results will this, will this bring us to. So that's kind of where my, where I am in this process.
I give you, I give you, like, I'll give you a high-level analysis of what this will show you, and then your, how you could react. So if we said, snow removal, all the programs associated to bring snow removal together, and if I come back to this result and you look at the charts and go, okay, we spend $800,000 a year on snow removal, and without a measurable to say how often it's, this is general, this is what we're spending, this we've got program, and you think about that and go, okay, $800,000, that seems all right. But if I came back to this and said, we spend $8 million a year on snow removal, and you'd probably look at it and you might go, is that worth it to us? Maybe we can let the snow set on the ground if there's two inches. You know, I mean, there's just, and that's what it'll show you on a program-level basis. You know, you'll, you'll hit each of these programs and see, here's a program. I like the program. Now, the evaluation then is a different criteria as to where are you weighting it, and we want to do more, and we get into mowing, or we come into police service? I mean, that, because that's another category, you know? What's the measurable there? How fast we respond to different things? But it's kind of, okay, here's police service. How much money do we spend in this? Or it's not there. It's program level of what's going on, not, here's what we spend on the police department. It's, how much do we spend in response? And trying to break that down to that level, or in different categories. And then you kind of get that global feel. Oh, we spend $50 million doing this of general fund dollars, and our whole budget's 260? And you might go, well, maybe that's kind of crazy. Or you may, that's not enough. You know, so that's, that's kind of that high-level analysis of what you're going to see, and you've asked for that, to say, show me those areas. You may see something on here. We may spend $200,000 on it and go, why?
And am I correct that once it's all loaded in, it'll be, we'll actually be able to see it in, in a large document?
Yes.
I would tell you, though, I'm not, I'm, I just want to let you know, I'm not, I can't speak for everyone, but I am not capable of that level, of high level of analysis because I have never run a city, and I don't know if $800 million or whatever, $8 million is a lot for snow removal. I have no point of reference. So, and now, I can, and Angela gave me a good suggestion. I can compare, I can say, we're spending $8 million on snow removal, but we're only spending a million on code enforcement. Well, I, I know this much, that it's, costs a lot more to remove snow than it does to write a code ticket. So I kind of know, so one should be considerably less than the other because I'm not buying a snowplow to give out code tickets. So that's as deep as I get. I mean, it's not what I do, so I just, that's why it, you know, I'll just make a side joke because I'm not trying to frustrate people, I'm really not. I just want to be able to have my district participate through me. And I was just telling Angela, the way that strikes me is like sending your, your husband to the grocery store with a grocery list that says, get me something out of the fruit aisle because I want to be healthier. Get me something out of the vegetable aisle because I want to be healthier, and get some meat, and get something to drink. It just seems very broad to me, and when I'm getting, that's, that's just, I'm participate, but it's just frustrating to me when I'm getting from my constituents very specific complaints, very specific. So I don't know how to get those addressed unless I try to address them during budget, and I can't address them during budget if I don't know how to do that.
One thing I'll add is that, so we have like this 700-page budget document, which is very useful and provides a lot of information, but one of the things that priority-based budgeting would do with the software that we have is it breaks it down into these goals that we have here, and we'll be able to see how we're spending money with those goals. So one of the things that the budget document doesn't do as useful as it is, it doesn't break it down into the goals and let us see where we're spending the money based on our goals. So we'll be able to make decisions based on the goals and be able to break out and see how we're spending based on our goals.
I think this also helps, too. If you were to go to a department and say, rank all your programs, they may say, well, we're doing all of these, all the programs are important. How do we know which ones are more important and which ones align? So these definitions will help you align those programs to the commission goal. Does that, this is supposed to help them maybe rank is, is, do we, is this, is one program a higher priority than another? They just know they're spending on all the programs.
Commissioner Bruce?
Do we have a timeline as when we'll get an initial report to see how effective this priority-based budgeting is? Will we have to wait a whole budget cycle to determine if we're getting the information we need in a manner that will help us make decisions?
So the plan is to, refining these definitions here, is that we're going to go back to the departments to have them rescore, and then also our peer groups to have them rescore. And on November 7, we're going to bring you back information and show you how the programs fall within the different quartiles based on the strategic goals that you have and the definitions that you refined tonight.
If I may, we only have so much money, and we need to decide as a body which programs we feel we need to fund. And if what we're doing is the proper way to do it, are we putting the resources necessary? And this is kind of, I understand what Commissioner McGeeah is asking. How soon will we know if the targeted policies and categories that we're wanting to identify as a priority are going to give us the feedback that we need? Are we going to have to wait a whole year and go through the next budget cycle to really hone it down? Are we going to be able to do this as we go along and maybe come back in seven months and say, this is what we have found? And maybe rethink how we're doing things? I mean, I'm all about priority-based budgeting, but I'm also about a return on investment. And if we're spending, as you, in your example, $8 million, we're going to be looking at fuel, how much fuel is used to do it, what equipment is used, how many departments use that same piece of equipment, how man-hours associated that piece of equipment. We're going to be able to find that out. The next question is, is it a priority of which department? And if we cut the money, the resources to that, where's those resources go? Where, where is the additional dollars go? That's going to be the battle that we're going to have as a commission to determine if that next priority is worthy of the dollars that we're either saving or shifting. Now, that's how I understand this, this to work, but I'm also a little anxious about, I want to see some, I'd like to see results a little quicker versus this time next year going through the same thing again. So, thank you.
On to that, will the EDF, EDNF Standing Committee, will this somehow play into the reports that they get on a quarterly basis from the finance department to, to, to apprise them of how we're going, doing in terms of actual to budget? That's the question that I'm having, tying into what Tom was talking about.
I'm not sure about that second part, just what, what is the right ways to come up with reporting through it? I think it's a little bit of work in progress as we go through, as Reggie said and Debbie, that we're, we're targeting that November timeframe to come back and start to show you how those quartiles rank out. I don't think that's a, it's not a final answer. You know, that's going to come back and show you, this is where, this is how you're spending the money according to what you've put in play. And then you'll weigh in on it at that point, whether we're spending too much in areas where you don't have the priority, just like you said. And then that will in turn go, as we develop the budget for the coming year, based on that input, to say, okay, we want to, you want this re-prioritized, so it's either don't spend the money or spend more money over here. And then we go back and build the budget with that and then come back and show you, this is how we'll accomplish that, and then this is how this ranks out. I, I think we're going to have to see it in motion. It's kind of like Commissioner Johnson said, you got to kind of let the process work a little bit here. It's, it's gone into play in some of the other communities and talking with some of the other managers that it's said, it's a very, it's, it's, it's a difficult one for everybody to get their heads around.
So, I, I think that, and that's kind of the point. I mean, obviously, this is the, the budget process, and so we asked the budget office to take care of this. You're sold on this. You obviously have been to the conferences, you've seen how it operates in other communities, and this is why we're launching into this, assuming, right? So what, we don't have access to that. That's not our experience, it's not what we do. We're trying to translate to something that we can grasp onto. We're going to have to see some of this play out as we go, but we're going to have obviously more questions as we go. I think it'd be interesting to hear from other electeds from other communities how they experienced this, because they probably ran into the same things. They might have some good answers for us.
I will just say on, to Commissioner Johnson's question about the ED, the budget-to-actual, I don't necessarily know that I see a change. The budget-to-actual that we present quarterly is showing the progress as we go through each quarter, where, where we're at as far as spending according to the budget. The budget amounts may change. If we go through this process and we reallocate budgets from one program to another, that might change, but the process that we do through the budget actual is just showing you how we're progressing throughout the year according to budget.
Okay, we have resolved to be unresolved.
Unresolved, don't keep working on it.
So...
I guess back to the, trying to build our definition on the infrastructure.
Yeah.
Are we good with what came forth for goal one, is kind of a rework, what's over on the right-hand column in the first section?
Yes.
And then merging of the next two?
Yes.
And I guess I'll offer that, these are coming back from the practitioners who look at it and say, when we're looking at what's going on in those areas, you know, this, it's a directional relationship to what's for work. So... I don't know about, well, I think the third one down, overseas, well-designed, well-maintained, that was agreed upon what we had brought forward. Fourth one, replacing with environmental stewardship. I will only offer that, back during the goal-setting in time, we kind of steered away from that language. And I see there's a push from staff to go back in that direction, but...
No.
But we, we kind of went away from that when you were doing goal-setting, so I think that's probably where that first goal sets that out, is ensure safe, clean. It explains it, so I don't know if I'd change that one, but...
Is there anything about environmental stewardship that is not encompassed in that definition that staff would be trying to encompass? That would be my only question. I did, I do think, I mean, we don't have the wording for environmental stewardship, so it's hard to say, but I like how specific the original language is about what we're addressing.
Nothing in there about refuse or recycling. His favorite.
About what?
Trash.
Oh.
Well, I, wow.
That's...
Hello. And you, you are 100% right. There were two people, their trash was supposed to be picked up Monday, I had to send somebody out there today to pick them up. And between, between waste management and not cutting the grass are the biggest issues I've had in the 14 years. I've had more phone calls, and I've kept Emrick and Lynn on their toes, and you as well, because when is enough enough? When do we say we sue them or something? You know, it, it is ridiculous, all the complaints that we get, and I know we're fining them, but are we fining them enough? Are we, because we're not, you know, when we have to send our own people out there to do it, yeah, and how much is it if they miss one, one thing?
I believe it's about $200.
And where, how much in fines do they have now?
Over $300,000 since May.
If, if that's not a concern of all of ours, and if that's not a priority of ours, I felt sorry for the guy today I sent out there because the trash had been there for four days, and it was ripe. You know, and here we, every week, we say, well, we're fining them. Why don't we get them in here, sit down, I'll come. And, and we have a face-to-face, nose-to-nose, toes-to-toes to tell them our displeasures. I've never seen, in any business I've ever worked in, this much lack of even a good Anybody disagree with that?
I don't disagree at all. I would think there is no doubt in my mind, they know how unhappy we are. How to capture, I do think we have to capture it somehow. How to capture it and the work we're trying to do right now, I mean, you know, we might want to find a way to at least fit that in there.
I'd just jump on the bandwagon with Mike and say, we, you know, I hear you, Melissa, and we got to be organized, but we spend a lot of time in discussion while trash doesn't get picked up, grass doesn't get mowed, houses don't get demoed, code violations go on. It's like, come on, let's just make a list and say, work on this. And if there's not enough money, we hire a county administrator to say, if you want all that done and you want it done faster, it's going to take this amount of money. And if we don't believe in, we can get in the weeds then. But at some point, we have to stop just talking about stuff and writing out definitions and having these kinds of conversations. We have to take action. I just, I just hear a lot of rhetoric and, and I'll start the last stumbling block. Even if we go through this process and it says, demo is really, again, I'm just making these up, by the way, demo is significantly important, so we want to increase it from $1 million to $2 million every year, that doesn't necessarily translate that in District 3, more demolitions are going to be done. So it doesn't address my concern. So I think that's how come there's this disconnect between our elected body and our staff sometime, is that it doesn't always happen like that. Or if I want more grass mowed, even though we've increased the budget, it doesn't necessarily translate to more lots being mowed in District 3. So, you know, it just, it's, it seems to me that it should be a little more user-friendly, and I want to be helpful, like Commissioner Bynum is being helpful. and I want to be helpful, like Commissioner Bynum is being helpful. I want to be helpful, but I'm not sure I can be any more helpful than what I just said.
We need to move on for- Well, we have an executive session scheduled for tonight. I think we'll leave this as-is, ask for further direction from the county administrator as they move forward, and entertain a motion.
That the commission go into executive session until 7:00 PM to consult with our attorneys and to discuss, under the attorney-client privilege, confidential matters related to pending litigation as permitted under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, and that staff designated by the county administrator be present to participate in the discussion, and that we reconvene in open session at 7:00 PM in the commission chamber located on the first floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The, the amount of fines that we're sending to-